Hi, good evening and welcome to the May 20th meeting of the Hickory City Council. At this time, I'm going to ask Council Representative from Ward 4 Reverend Anthony Freeman from Clinton Tabernacle AME Zion Church to give our invocation. I would ask that if you're able, to please stand for the invocation and remain standing after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we say thank you for the type of God that you continue on being towards all of us, that even though we live in a sinful, broken world, that you're still a God that remains faithful, compassionate, and full of grace. As your scripture teaches us, that where sin abounds, grace much more bounds. And so, Father, we pray that you continue on giving all of us, those who serve as leaders within the community, a humble heart, that we might be able to serve out of the kindness that you continue on showing us. Continue on giving leaders clarity and discernment, that we might be able to be a thriving, safe, and just community. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started this evening, I would like to recognize someone in our audience from the Boy Scouts of America. I met Jayden just a few minutes ago, so I'm gonna let Jayden stand, and I think that's his father that's with him, introduce themselves and tell what he's here for and which church he's representing.
I'm Jayden. I'm a Boy Scout, I'm a volunteer, and I'm a communication sergeant.
All right, well, welcome, Jayden. We appreciate you being here. Do we have any other scouts? I don't know if there was any other scouts. I didn't see anybody else in uniform, but I think he's the only one. All right, we have some special presentations this evening. So first up, let's see, I'll call on Mr. Steve Miller. He's our Public Services Director, and I think also he has with him Chip Vanderzey. Chip, come on up with him, and I'll let Steve introduce our first special presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Guest, Members of Council, Mr. Chrome.
Oh, man, that was... That's going way back. Mr. Swanson, Mr. Wood. That tells you how long I've worked here. I've got Chip with me tonight. He's gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to him, because he's gonna be giving us something pretty cool here, but sorry, Tim.
I had to do a workout before I came in here. This thing's so big, and you guys are also gonna need to build a bigger trophy cabinet, apparently. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Chip Vanderzey, American Public Works Association. I'm the North Carolina Chapter President. I appreciate what you guys are doing for your community. I'm a retired local government employee, and your leadership is evident in your community and with the staff that you have. The last time I was here, you were recognizing your public works employees as first responders. Thank you for that. As you know, they are part of the mechanism that gets everything cleaned up. They're kind of the, what I call the Philo, first in, last out type of mentality. So, we appreciate that. The trophy you see in front of you is for our APWA rodeo for the North Carolina region. Hickory is blessed with some great operators. You guys took first place overall in the rodeo this year, and I'm gonna read a few names out, just to give recognition to those folks, and also thank you for celebrating National Public Works Week tomorrow. It's a big event, and we really appreciate that. Like I said, you guys are talented here in Hickory. We have a certain equipment. The rodeo is meant to be a way to demonstrate proficiency in operating this equipment, and like I said, you guys are blessed. First place for the side loader garbage truck was Kellen Bowman. Second place for the articulated mower was Jamie Lee. And you all took first place overall with Kellen Bowman, Jamie Lee, Logan Walters, Dwayne Lockey, Doug McCoy, and Gabriel Rodriguez. And those employees that you sent to the rodeo, competing against multiple municipalities across the state, were representing equipment in the knuckle boom truck, side loader garbage truck, articulated mower, snow plow, backhoe, and mini excavator. And I'm gonna present this to Kellen. I believe this is who I'm supposed to give this to. Thank you very much.
Get them all up here for a picture, sir.
I would love to do a picture. Kellen, you're up, sir.
Get them up here. Now, Steve, is this the first time that we've won at this level?
So, this is the first year that they've done the overall? So, yeah, it's the first year we've done...
This is the first year we've done this much equipment and first place overall. You guys have sent some really good talent each year. You've actually represented North Carolina at our national rodeo, and that rotates around the country.
Well, since we're the winners, that means it's here next year, right? Is that, we not get, is that not how that works? We get to defend our home?
We might be able to host it here.
That's, that isn't, that's on the radar.
All right.
Bobby Hatley was the national champion a few years ago. Yeah, so we've got a couple.
Yeah, we keep cultivating more and more representatives. We've had to make some of our guys sit on the sidelines at least a few years, give somebody a chance.
Do you have, it seems like one year you had some video.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Is that available somewhere for people to look at?
I think we have some video.
I had a video of it, I could...
Yeah, we should put that on our website and share that, because this is quite the accomplishment and really something to be proud of.
And having two national champions going against the champions from 50 states.
Yeah, if anybody's interested, YouTube on APWA National in North Carolina has some YouTube videos, and you can catch our guys.
Well, we need to have that on our website. Thank you.
And I have to say, Chip, I appreciate him coming up. He was at Havelock this morning.
Oh, my gosh.
And he's doing that whole kind of thing tomorrow in High Point and some other places. So, he's on the road all the time promoting APWA and how much it means to the state. We appreciate you.
And the good work that the public works folks do for you. Thank you very much for supporting them.
Well, we certainly do support them, and they do a terrific job day in and day out. And this is, I think this is somewhat fun, and I mean, I know it's a lot of skill, but I think it's a fun event as well. I hope, at least I hope it is.
Yeah, they have fun, they do.
Okay, well, that's good. And we got good equipment.
Exactly, that makes a difference. Our folks are used to operating great equipment, and that helps us, as those guys attest. We are appreciative of the council and manager and mayor giving us fine equipment to work with.
All right, well, thank you again.
Tim, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I would like to, before you escape, before you and your team escape, I would like to say one thing. I mean, the technical proficiency is impressive, but equally impressive is the customer service and the kindness that these guys have, and the guys and gals have. I don't know if it made it to you, but I passed it along, that a citizen commented one day about one of the team members, about how they interact with her son. She has a young son, and every week when the garbage pickup comes, he takes the time to recognize and kind of interact with this person, and that's huge. I mean, you know, the technical proficiency is special, but it's, you know, just the customer service and the kindness that they show is impressive, and it makes me proud.
Yeah, the manager passed that to us, and we passed it on, and that's indicative of what they do on a daily basis.
Yeah.
I couldn't be more proud of those folks, and they make us all look really good.
Absolutely.
Especially me.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we get an opportunity here to brag on some more of our city coworkers. So, at this time, I'll ask, let's see, Kyle Brown, who's our Code Enforcement Supervisor, if he'll come forward, and also Thomas Raper, our Fire Inspections Representative. This is also Building Safety Month. Now, we did, he was correct, last month, we, or last council meeting, we did recognize Public Works Week as well. So, we did that at our last meeting. All right, I want a code enforcement place. We are blessed throughout the city with tremendous coworkers, and it seems like here lately, we're having a lot of opportunities to give them their proper accolades and to thank them for the work that they do and for some of the things that they do that a lot of times goes unrecognized. But as council members, I can tell you that we get calls and we get to talk to folks throughout the community, and a lot of these folks that seem to work behind the scenes, we hear quite frequently about what a great tremendous job that they do, and we're just really honored. And our citizens should be proud of the staff that we have and the coworkers that we have representing the city of Hickory. We're not perfect by no means, but I'll put our coworkers up against any from any municipality anywhere, because I see the work that they do, and I hear from citizens about the great jobs that they do, and I couldn't, I couldn't be more proud to be mayor, and I know our council members would say the same thing of the staff and the coworkers that we have throughout the city of Hickory. So, this is also Building Safety Month in May of 2025, and so I've got a proclamation here that I'm going to read. It says, "Whereas the city of Hickory is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. Whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, landscape tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. Whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. Whereas these modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials, officials who assure us of all safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas "Game On" is the theme for Building Safety Month of 2025, and it encourages all to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year in observance of the Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improving building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local, state, tribal, territorial, and federal building safety and fire prevention departments in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, I, Hank Guest, Mayor of the City of Hickory, on behalf of the Hickory City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Building Safety Month in the city of Hickory. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Proclaim this 20th day of May 2025." All right? I'll present this to you guys. All right. Yeah, I'm really biased, but we've got the best coworkers of any municipality around. We just, we just got some really good folks. All right, that's all for the special presentations. Next on the agenda is persons requesting to be heard. At every council meeting, we allow those that would like to address the council the opportunity to be able to do that. We have some that have signed up tonight to be able to do that. It's not necessary that you sign up, but I'll begin with those who have signed up. We ask that you approach the podium, that you state your name and your address, and that you limit your conversation to three minutes or less. Just to let you know, the council will not be answering any questions or anything like that. We'll be listening, and we will follow up with you at a later time if necessary. So, the first person on the list that's signed up to speak this evening is Byron Mason. So, that's Byron to come to the podium.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I haven't done this in quite a while, so please bear with me. This actually takes five minutes, but I will try and talk very quickly. My name is Byron Mason. I live at 1334 20th Avenue Place Northeast. 20th Avenue is a small dead-end road with six houses on it. We have seven children that live on our street. Nearly every day, the children of this little road play together and ride bikes up and down, down the road. The community we have on 20th Avenue is what makes this city such an amazing and great place to live, and it's why my wife and I moved to Hickory, what we moved here to find. 20th Avenue Place dead-ends into a parcel. Five months ago, this parcel, whose address is 2047 8th Street Drive Northeast, and a parcel to the north of it, 2051 8th Street Drive Northeast, were cleared of the trees and a development was started. We eventually learned that this development will be two duplexes with four units in total. These units do not have a 20th Avenue address. However, the driveway for these lots will be accessed on 20th Avenue and not 8th Street, even though 2051 doesn't share a property line with 20th Avenue. Instead, a driveway from 2051 will go through 2047, run 100 feet on top of the utility easement, and connect both properties to 20th Avenue. None of the residents of 20th Avenue were aware that these lots could be connected to 20th instead of to 8th Street. When construction crews began using 20th Avenue to access the lots and driveways, and the driveway was built, I started investigating why this was being allowed. I want to thank Brian Fraser, if he is here, for answering my many, many questions. Thank you, Brian. These duplexes are not allowed to exit onto 8th Street because the city wants to limit access to 8th Street as it's a main rip. However, there are 12 driveways within a quarter mile of these parcels that have a driveway exiting onto 8th. The 60% increase in traffic on our peaceful little road is a major safety concern to our neighborhood. If this was just a single-family residence with two cars on the one lot, we would welcome it with open arms. But it's not. Instead, this is a two multifamily buildings, which will have four units, and increase the traffic on a road by eight vehicles, including a lot that doesn't have access to 20th Avenue. The increase in traffic will put our children and neighborhood at risk, but it would have nearly an insignificant impact if it was exiting onto 8th. The increase in traffic just from the construction crew has already become a major problem for the neighborhood. Every day, we have trucks that are speeding down the road. In fact, Tim was at my house this morning, Tim from Code Enforcement, thank you, was at my house this morning dealing with this problem. On top of which, these trucks are blocking our road, they're blocking our driveways, and they're using our driveway as a turnaround. This has brought up another safety concern for the neighborhood. We believe that residents of these duplexes will continue to have to use our driveways as a turnaround and park in front of our homes. I am almost done, thank you. I have spoken to various people at the city about these duplexes and the neighborhood's concerns. I have to say, I have to say another thank you to Caroline Cohn for addressing these concerns with me. I've been informed that these units are required to have eight parking spaces and a turnaround. However, there is simply no way that this is happening. These lots are tiny, at .116 and .25 of an acre. The duplexes have a 2,500 square foot footprint, which is taking up every inch of these lots. These units are being shoehorned onto lots that are simply too small to accommodate duplexes, and it appears that corners are being cut. It's clear that these units are not being built with a long-term living in mind. These units are being built to be rental properties and are foregoing basic amenities such as a yard, parking, or even curb appeal. In addition, residents of these units will have to walk over 200 feet to check their mail or take their trash out. Also, the eight trash bins will have to be placed on my neighbor's yard because they can't do it on the duplexes. 200 feet away, and as the trash trucks will not be able to drive up this driveway. In addition to foregoing any resemblance of aesthetics, these units are being built quickly, cheaply, and are cutting every corner they can. This developer has a reputation for cutting corners and is well-known at the city for doing so. If I understood correctly, the city is even withholding the certificate of operation on multiple units around Hickory that this developer has built because of the many problems the city has had with him. You've no doubt seen these units as they are all over town, and they stick out like a sore thumb. Mr. Mayor and council members, I am begging you to help our wonderful little road and to help other neighbors, neighborhoods that will be and are being ruined by this developer. This type of development hurts our amazing town. These units are being built solely to help one developer who is from New York and who was just arrested for assault on a woman, and this is at the expense of Hickory residents. Please, we are begging you, help our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
We don't allow any clapping, jeering, or anything like that, so please refrain from doing that. All right? Next is Peter Collins.
It's Peter Collins. I live at 1320 20th Avenue Place Northeast, right beside Byron. Been there 25 years, dead-end street. When I bought the house, I called the city. They told me it wasn't going to be connected to the busy road they were just putting in, so I bought the house. Next thing you know, in the last couple of months, they've changed the entry to these. Well, they had two lots on the other street, they combined them, and now the entrance is coming at the end of our street. Everybody on our street's upset. We finally got young kids in there after 20 years, Byron's kids, and this came out of nowhere. I mean, if you're gonna put up developments, put a sign up, let us know, so we can come down and say something, whether we want to have it or not. Tell us. This is a big surprise. This is awful. Hickory's a great place to live, but, you know, after 25 years, hey, I guess if I don't like it, I'll just move. I want you all to know that. Thank you.
Matt Sin.
My name is Matt Sin. Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and fellow citizens for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'm not regularly one to speak out, but there is an issue that has come to my attention that I feel that maybe the council's aware of, but many citizens are not. There are several bills in the NC House and Senate that want to change the way that we as citizens and government control our zoning. As we've heard, it's a privilege for ordinary citizens to be able to speak to you all about zoning issues. Now, if you're not familiar, there's several, about 30 bills in the House and Senate that want to change the way we do things. They want to limit the number of ordinary citizens that get to speak. They want to change it to a quasi-judicial system where basically only expert testimony is allowed. And maybe most heinous, they want to make our local government personally financially liable if a court rules in favor of the developer that the council was arbitrary in their decision. One thing that really concerns me is the new 104-day rule, where if a developer puts in a zoning request and there's no answer within 104 days, the request automatically is approved in favor of the developer, which completely bypasses our representative government system. Now, what can we do? We can call, write, whatever, try to contact our state representatives, but as you all know, you don't see them around, they're really hard to contact. So, the two things they understand are votes and money. I don't have a lot of money, but I do have a vote. What we can do is temporarily change our voter registration to unaffiliated, to send them a signal. There's people like Zenger, who sued and extorted $2 million out of the city of Louisville. We don't want that to happen to Hickory. We want all our towns and municipalities to remain distinctive, how large a population that other cities don't have. So, basically, to sum it up, the idea that the state legislature wants to change the arrangement that the citizens and our local government have agreed to, we all know that the people who govern closest to the people govern best, and the idea that they want to change that, we have a saying where I come from, and that's, "That dog don't hunt." Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? Yes, sir, if you would, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes or less.
My name's Tyron Reed. I'm sitting 339 5th Street Southeast. I want to talk about my house I own at 603 First Street Southwest. It's in what they call back in the day a red zone for like food delivery and stuff, because back in the day it was necessary. I grew up in this area, I know why it was red zone back then, like Pizza Hut wouldn't deliver stuff like that, but it's still like that now. After the bookwalk been built, after all the new houses been built, after all that stuff tore down, I wonder if y'all could actually like de-red zone it, so people could have food just delivered right down the street here and stuff like that, if you could, but I don't know the process for that. And secondly, I worked at Old Hickory Station, the restaurant right downtown, you know, right around the block, and I used to work at Hickory Tap Room right over there, and the parking is horrendous. The parking ticket just went up from $5 to $15, and we only get three hours, how am I a chef in a restaurant that will be able to move my car if I, because there's not no place to park, there's sometimes, you know, free parking. But how can we get out to move our car when we're on the line cooking for people? We just can't do it like that, so. Some type of way, like the restaurant itself, if not to say, but the restaurant itself has printed up some type of little permit to go in their car for workers, so we're allowed to park in them places and won't get a ticket, because I don't see the city needing our money that bad, to where we get tickets when we are literally working every day, and I know people that get tickets almost every single day they go to work. And that's, that's just strange to me. If we could do something about that, I would greatly appreciate it. And thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening? All right, doesn't appear to be anyone else. Next item on the agenda is item number six, approval of our special meeting, which was the council retreat of May the 1st, 2025.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? All right, that carries unanimously. And I failed to say at the beginning of the meeting, Councilwoman Jill Patton is absent this evening. We do have a quorum.
She was taking a friend to Charlotte for treatment and got hung up in traffic.
All right, so that passes unanimously. Next item for approval is our regular meeting of May the 6th.
Move approval.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? That also carries unanimously. Item number seven is our reaffirmation ratification on second readings. Once again, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? That also carries unanimously. Item number eight is our consent agenda. I'll ask if there's any member of staff or council that would like to have any items removed from the consent agenda.
Move that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? The consent agenda approved unanimously. We don't have any public hearings this evening or departmental reports. I'll ask if there's anyone on council that would like to make any appointments to any of our boards or commissions.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mary Young to the Citizens Advisory Committee.
All right, Mary Young. Are there any other appointments? All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Mary Young to the Citizens Advisory Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? That carries unanimously. That carries unanimously as well. Alright, any matters not on the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Any general comments from the council?
Yes, I have one, just very quickly. My comment comes in the form of accolades and also information, and it's regarding the transition process with the Hickory Public Housing vouchers to the Western Piedmont Council of Government. So first of all, we'd like to give accolades and acknowledge the tremendous work that the interim executive director, Anthony Starr. Because I believe in decorum and order, I'll stay in my seat so I wouldn't startle our mayor, but if I could, I would stand up and give my own personal single standing ovation for a job well done, and they have worked hard with the new revised Secret Public Housing Board that was appointed by our mayor and Anthony Starr and his staff. They certainly need to be commended, as they have certainly walked through this journey that has not been a walk in the park, but they are closely to the end of finalizing the transfer, so I certainly wanted to give them accolades. Second of all, this point of information, I received this on today, and so I wanted to just read an excerpt of this letter that would be sent out to New Dimension's residents. On Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, the Hickory Public Housing Authority will post notices on homes of New Dimension residents for their option to apply for Hickory Public Housing voucher. New Dimension residents may remain in their current homes. HUD requires that the Hickory Public Housing to make this an option available. However, since the RAD agreement back in 2015, I believe, prior, way before my time on this city council, this should have been being done, but it was never done. And so it is being done now, that these letters will be posted on the 311 units of New Dimension. They will have an option to apply for Section 8 voucher if they desire to move from the brick and mortar of New Dimension. So I will put it in my own commentary, which is, all of the complaints that we receive, this is your opportunity to now certainly apply for a new voucher, and you can move from New Dimension. And so this information will be circulating around the community, it will be posted on all of the doors of the New Dimension residents, and I will hope that our leaders, our churches will also be able disseminate this information. And so once again, job well done.
And I'll say, I concur with you 100% about the leadership, not only from Anthony and his team, but of course to those who have been recently appointed to the Housing Authority Board. Those are volunteers, they are not staff, they are not paid, and they have certainly taken on a responsibility and done a fantastic job with turning things around and getting them where they should be, so I want to join you in congratulating them and thanking them for a job well done. Alright, any other comments from councilor staff?
I think I will, you know what's coming, congratulate our city manager on the birth of his first grandson, Bear.
I look great for 75. I feel like I'm 75.
There's nothing like it.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, sign? Alright, that carries unanimously.